This is an aerial photograph of mines that are along Prairie Creek in the DeSoto County portion of Prairie Creek. And each one of these black squares or rectangles is a mine pit lake, as we call them. These are former mine operations that when they're done, what results is basically a lake. And that sometimes might be a euphemism. It's a hole, a big hole in the ground with water that may not necessarily be good quality. But nevertheless, all of those lakes expose the superficial aquifer to the, to losses due to evaporation. And what we are attempting to do is to prevent that from happening to Shell Creek to the extent that it causes a problem down the road for the city. This is...
Excuse me. This is DeSoto County?
Yes.
Okay.
I hope you can see that. I can't see it here. Hopefully on your monitor it's better. But the bottom line is that Shell Creek is, the mines that have been permitted for Shell Creek primarily have not yet been under construction. There are a few, and there's one all the way to the eastern part of the watershed where there's a big lake that shows one that has been in existence for quite some time. But most of the Shell Creek mines have not begun excavation, or if they have, it's only minimal excavations. And so, you know, what we have is an opportunity to try to regulate those mines from going too far in terms of removing water from the superficial aquifer. And so with the assistance of Dr. Kincaid, I came up with, and let me also tell you what we're talking about. We're talking about, based on evaporation rates that are locally adjusted, we're talking about a loss of approximately 3 million gallons of water per day as a result of evaporation when these mines are built up. Compare that with the, I think the testimony earlier was that we withdraw 3 to 4 million gallons of water per day for drinking water supply. So almost the entire amount of our drinking water supply is being evaporated potentially by the lakes upon build-out. And also evaluated the flow in Shell Creek. And there are certain times of the year when the flow in Shell Creek is minimal, to nonexistent. And so, we have a, Judy Ott from the Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program is going to be a witness for us, who's going to be testifying about how, when the water gets down to where it's nothing, the critters struggle. So you've got to try to maintain some degree of flow. So I calculated roughly that if we could, if we could get the mines to reduce the surface area of their ultimate lakes by 25 percent when they're done, that might result in enough stream flow to keep at least some water flowing to Shell Creek all the time. And so, I presented that scenario to the attorney for the mining interest to see if the miners would accept that as the basis of a discussion of settlement. I cannot propose anything in settlement until you authorize me to do that. So this was sort of just a floating trial balloon. And the response I got was that they're, they don't agree with our language as written, but didn't propose anything else. And oh, by the way, we're all moving forward to the hearing, the trial on September 11th. And so, what I felt like the one thing that we still have left to do, and hadn't done it because we were relying upon this strategy of trying to work first with the miners, is to make a settlement proposal directly to the county commission and force the county commission to consider either accepting our proposal, or coming back with a counter, or rejecting it, but at least, at least taking a formal position to the city, to the county commission and asking them to consider that position. And I'm not sure how much, quite frankly, the county commission understands what this problem is doing to Shell Creek. And I also don't think they understand how inconsistent their current provision is with respect to other provisions of their comprehensive plan. This is a provision in the comprehensive plan that is directly intended to protect the Shell Creek and Prairie Creek watersheds. I'm gonna blow it up in just a moment, but it recognizes the importance of the dam, and it recognizes the importance of the creeks that feed water to the dam. And so, and this is, again, this is in this comprehensive plan, this is not affected by the proposed amendments. And in there, they say that these Group III, these mine excavations are prohibited within a half mile of the creek. And one of my arguments is that, well, if they haven't started, or if they haven't started their excavation, there should be a mechanism for preventing them from starting now because of, because of these prohibitions. But even still, even if the county feels like they can grandfather these older mines in, and on a case-by-case basis, as you can see in paragraph 2F, they can approve these, some of these mines, even in the area that's supposed to be protected by that half-mile buffer. First, they're required to show that it will have no negative effect on the quality or quantity of water within Hendrickson Dam. Well, we know that Shell Creek, when it gets to the point where the TDSs are elevated, is a negative effect upon, on Hendrickson Dam. And we also know that where that stuff is coming from is from Shell Creek. And if you reduce the water quantity in Shell Creek during those times of year when the water in general is low, you can do nothing but create a negative effect upon the quality and quantity of the water within the Hendrickson Dam reservoir. But it also says that even if they were able to demonstrate that there would be no negative effect, these mines I'm talking about, still, in no case shall prohibited uses, that's that Group III mine, shall be allowed within one-quarter mile of the shoreline of the creeks or creeks tributaries. And... This is the proposed mining plan for one of the two mines that have joined in with the county to defend them against our challenge.
Is this the R&amp;D mine?
This is the R&amp;D mine, yes. And this is the outline of the lakes that will result after the mining. This is Shell Creek. The red line is the quarter mile from Shell Creek, and the blue line is half mile of Shell Creek. So you can see with respect to Lake One, at least half of that lake is within the zone where there should be an absolute prohibition with respect to these mines, and most of Lake One is clearly within a half-mile prohibition of Lake One. So I believe that simply requiring them to reduce the overall square footage of the lake area for each of the mines, because it's the cumulative impact that we're concerned about. And I want to, I want to stress that, because even though the regulating agency, SWIFTMUD, is required to consider cumulative impacts when they grant mine permits, and the county also is required to consider cumulative impacts, it's clear from my review of the permits from both the county and SWIFTMUD, that all they're looking at is the direct impact of the individual mine. And in the words of the counties, of the consultants on behalf of the mine that presented their report, "The impacts of loss of water due to evaporation of an individual mine is de minimis." And that's, and that's true. It depends on how much square footage of lake area they have, but even our consultant would agree with that. But it's not the individual impact, it's the cumulative impact of all of those lakes that theoretically would be constructed pursuant to permits have been granted. So that's why, if you reduce each mine irrespective of how big it was to 25 percent, ultimately the cumulative impact of all those mines together would still allow for some water to be flowing to Shell Creek, notwithstanding the evaporation.
Excuse me, David. When you say all of the lakes, are we talking about just these two, or are we talking about additional lakes from the other mines?
All of, every mine that I showed you in that yellow, with some exception that were outside of the buffer area, all of those, all of those mines are proposed to have lakes. Very few of them have been, have been constructed to the extent that we saw in Soto County, for example. And so, we're not seeing much impact yet to the quantity of water, or reduction in quantity of water to Shell Creek, because the mines haven't been constructed. And that was one of the arguments, unfortunately, that their consultants made, was there's, you know, we've been mining, we have all these permits, and there's been very little impact to the quantity of water in Shell Creek. Well, that's because very few of them have created mines that are creating the evaporation. So what I've asked, what I'm asking the city council to do is to authorize the mayor to send a letter to the county commission, asking them to consider the language that we've proposed as an amendment to their proposed amendment, to, so that any mine that seeks a renewal or an extension would be required to reduce the amount of their surface area of the lake by 25 percent. And that no permit can be expanded beyond that, which is currently permitted, to increase the surface area. And what I didn't put in this version, but certainly would be okay, is that if they can continue to dig deeper and not cause any environmental impacts, they might be able to offset the loss of the 25 percent surface area of lake by digging deeper or on an, you know, on an angle below the surface, so that the amount of sand that they're able to extract wouldn't change. But just the resulting surface area of the lake would be reduced, so that less water would be evaporated. And on top of that, and it's very important, we would ask that the county commission consider granting a continuance, postponing the hearing that's set for September 11th, so that the parties have an opportunity to come up with a settlement criteria. 25 percent might be too much. Maybe it's something less than 25 percent. Maybe there's something else that could be done, but we have not had an opportunity to have an intelligent discussion about how can this be resolved. Now, let me also suggest that I'm not proposing a settlement, because I think there's any weakness to our case. And quite, and part of me says, well, I'd like to go forward now that I've had all the discovery and saw what their case is. I don't believe they can support their case. But our burden is very high. You never know what the judge is going to, is going to say, see. And to the extent that we can save a considerable amount of legal fees and costs, I would hope we could do that. I will tell you, because I think, Mayor, you mentioned it at the last city council meeting or one before that, that up to now, we've, this challenge has cost about $30,000 in fees.
It's more than $30,000 just for your costs, and we now have another $7,000 cost with our consultant.
Correct. And I will say to you that before all is said and done, just to get to the end of this particular proceeding, we're looking at least double what we've spent so far, and if the, if the county and/or the mines do an appeal, then it's more than that. So hopefully, we can reach a settlement that would protect the water and also still give the miners an opportunity to get something out of their investment, but...
I would, I would almost challenge the attorneys for the miners that they're pushing this just so that they keep increasing their tab. I mean, this is, this is really ridiculous that we're not being able to come to some conclusion. I also, I think your letter is good, but I'm very much concerned that this won't be sufficient for the commission to take action. I'm wondering whether we should request, first of all, a postponement of the hearing date, but have an actual face-to-face meeting with our commissioners to discuss this specific issue. Because I don't think they understand, I agree with you, it's not an easy issue to understand, and they're getting pushback from the miners, you know, and it's not, quote, "not having any effect on our water," when we're looking at, again, down the pike, and this is not just Punta Gorda, this is Charlotte County. I mean, this, they're...
Yes, they're...
They're responsible for Charlotte County's water, too. I mean, it comes from Shell Creek.
Exactly. I mean, as I phrased it in the draft letter, these are, these are Charlotte County residents that are affected by their impact to the drinking water supply. I, you know, I would welcome anything that we can do to bring this to an amicable resolution. I think if you, you need to make it in the form of a settlement proposal, so that they've, so that they are obligated at least to discuss it and respond, even if they reject it, at least they have to take time to do that. And couple that with a continu, a continuation of the hearing, so that we have time. Up to this point, it, and like I said, I got a call from the county attorney, that they are pushing very hard to maintain the September 11th date. In fact, they, they want me to fly in our expert witness, so that they can depose, take his deposition. I offered to make the witness available by telephone. He's based in Nevada, and that was, I was told that was unacceptable. So we now have to negotiate and argue who has to pay for the costs of his travel and stuff.
Well, if they wanted to depose him, they would pay for it.
And, well, that's going to be our position, but once again, you know, we're going to be fighting back and forth.
I know.
So, do you think if we request a meeting in which Dr. Kincaid could come and make a presentation, where they could get all, you could, all of the information that you've gathered, which is substantial, he has gathered, and if the miners want to be there, and they can talk about, you know, what they think, and their engineers, and so that everyone can really, I mean, I feel like I really understand now. And I understand that it's really a big issue, and it's really a problem. And, you know, maybe they feel like they understand, too. I don't know. But I think that it would be wise if we could have a meeting with them, where we could all discuss it and hear what everyone has to say in one room with just that one issue.
There's nothing secret about what we're going to present at hearing, and that's what discovery's all about. So they'll see what we have. I have no problem, you know, making, making our presentation in abbreviated fashion to the commissioners, in the hope that they may not have understood what the circumstances are, or what our concerns are. But I'm hoping that we're not too naive in that.
First Rachel, and then Tom.
I mean, we've already asked for a joint meeting, and that, that was turned down. And, you know, the process that they've gone through, particularly on the expediting of the hearing, was not done in a public commission meeting, from what I understand. It was a polling of the commissioners to move forward on that. So I think we should send the letter, and, you know, at least get it on some kind of public agenda. And if we can work with them to get this meeting set up, I don't know where it's going to go. I think it is a good idea, but I don't know that it's going to fly.
Tom?
Would the purpose of the meeting with the commissioners be to get a continuance or an extension of the trial, of the trial date?
Well, I would hope that, that by the mayor and the city council asking for a continuance, to let them know that we would like to discuss this with them, that the first thing they would do was grant the continuance. And that's something that the attorneys can do, as long as the, as long as they're directed by the commission to do that. I know that, I believe that there's a pre-agenda meeting of the county commission on September 3rd, where they could do this at a public setting if that needed to be done. I can't, I can't hold off preparation, and, because there's still a lot of work to be done, which was stopped when we thought we were going to be trying to settle this case. So the quicker that we, we ask for a continuance, and get the county commission to understand, at least to grant a continuance to maintain the status quo, so we can then discuss on a less expedited basis perhaps, so that they'll have an opportunity, we would have an opportunity to give them an informed presentation, you know, that, the better.
At least share with them our significant concerns. Tom?
Then, as I think, as the mayor suggested, we should try and do that as quickly as possible, and do that. I don't believe that we would have enough time to bring, to get all of the expert witnesses and make that kind of a presentation.
Not before September 11th.
Not before September 11th. So I think we should follow with the mayor's suggestion, be prepared to deliver the letter at the commission meeting as well.
Well, we need to send it ASAP.
Right.
I thought we were going to deliver it personally, but we can send it. Sure.
I would send it so they can get it on their agenda. And I don't know if we need to, if they need to get...
We can send it. I can also hand-deliver an original tomorrow, because we have the Restore Act committee. Okay? But we need to...
We need to do that. We need to do that.
Absolutely.
And I would like to just kind of go through this again, perhaps with you, and add a few things.
Yeah, sure. That's our problem.
You know, so that we make it as strong as possible, that this is, you know, not something that we want put off, and not for them to, you know, say, "Oh, well, our county attorney has already made that decision, therefore," kind of thing. Is that agreeable, Nancy?
Yep. I agree. I have no faith that they're actually going to listen to us, but we, we need to take that step. We need to take the high road and...
And do it in a joint, I believe, a joint meeting.
Yes.
Rather than having three minutes to present our case, which happened the last time.
So can we have a motion to accept the city attorney's draft?
No, she wants to go through it.
Well, if you could...
Well, the recommendation of the settlement proposal...
And ask for a continuance.
Yeah.
Yes.
So moved. Been moved and seconded to move forward, to send a letter to the county commissioners, requesting first of all, a postponement of the September 11th hearing date, and also to have a joint meeting to discuss this particular issue.
Just this issue.
Just this issue.
And to consider the settlement proposal that we...
And consider the settlement proposal.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
David, it was just a terrific presentation. You made it crystal clear, at least in my mind. I thought you did an excellent job. Thank you for all that you've done.
I have nothing further.
Okay. Thank you. Getting back to our agenda. All right. We have now our city clerk.
Under announcement of vacancies, we continue to have our two seats on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board for alternates. Nominations. Under nominations, we have three, three-year terms on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and we have eight eligible applicants.
Nominate all.
Thank you. Also, for the Board of Zoning Appeals, we have one three-year term as an alternate, and five eligible applicants for nomination.
Nominate all.
This is wonderful, that we have applicants.
I'm just impressed.
Well, they all go through the same people.
But I was reading this, and it's like, we have all these, and it's like, do we want to vote on the, the permanent seats first, before we vote on the...
Yes. And I was going to bring that up at the next meeting, because all of the appointments will be at the next meeting, so I think that's the order that we should do it in.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay. And then, finally, for the Board of Zoning Appeals, we have one unexpired term and six eligible applicants for nomination.
Nominate all.
I'm sorry, was that you, Catherine?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Also, under nominations, we have one unexpired term as an alternate on the Planning Commission. We have two eligible applicants for that.
Nominate all.
Thank you.
You skipped over Burnstour Isles Canal Advisory.
Uh-oh. I missed one. Sorry about that.
And I'll nominate all.
Okay. Well, I'm missing my BSI. Okay. Thank you.
We're just in charge of the committee.
Oh, gosh.
And then, Building Board, one unexpired term and two eligible applicants.
Nominate all.
Under Appointments, we have one three-year term on the Code Enforcement Board. The voting forms are coming.
And the appointee is Lynn Matthews.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
We have policy and legislation, and I had a couple of things. Let me just pull quickly here. The City of Punta Gorda has been invited to participate in a symposium on meeting market demands, creating walkable urban communities. I've been invited to participate on the mayor's panel at lunchtime, and we've also have an invitation to participate on the Shark Tank, in which our city manager has agreed to participate on. So we will be doing that, and that date is October 15th. So that's an all-day workshop. Others are invited. The idea is to bring together individuals who are looking to develop walkable communities, so there'd be investors there, et cetera. So we'll see how that, how that evolves and how that goes. I've also...
Could I just add a comment there?
Sure.
When I got the phone call from Ann Pierce about it, they were, she was really, really complimentary about Punta Gorda, and the things that we have done since, since 10 years ago, 11, 11 years ago since our, in our recovery. And she said that communities were asking to be a part of the Shark Tank, and she said, "We want Punta Gorda to be one of them on the Shark Tank." So it's almost like, so, "Put your, your idea forward, because we want you there." I thought that was really cool.
Yeah. Very, very nice, very nice recognition. And our city's gotten recognition in a number of ways in the past, but I think, however, it's up to the Shark Tank, don't you think?
Cool. I like it.
I do.
A thematic tie in your near...
Big Jaws, maybe a Jaws tie or something.
Mm-hmm. We'll have to look for that.
Yeah, we'll have to work on that.
You don't have a TV show?
No, I haven't seen it.
Oh, it's a, it's a TV show where people come up with their entrepreneurial idea, and they've got a, their own little business they've started usually, and they go before, I think it's five, gazillionaires, who will then, when I say gazillionaires, we're talking about these, they're not just a multimillionaire, they're like big-time money.
Walton.
Like Mark Cuban and those kind of people. And they present their idea, and they want to get their idea funded, and then they offer them a stake in the company for, you know, a percentage of the company in exchange for their, their money and their expertise. And they really can be brutal to these guys. They come in and they present it, and they can really be nasty.
But we know you can handle it.
We know you can handle that kind of interaction, so it'd be wonderful.
Are we going to get some money?
Yeah, do we get... Yeah, do we get, yeah, what do we get out of it?
I don't know.
We'll have to talk further with...
Supposedly what they, they've invited people from all over the country, experts in creating walkable communities and what they're hoping to do is have this panel that would kind of like a Shark Tank idea of them offering suggestions. I don't know if there's, but the Southwest Florida Community Foundation is a part of this, so I don't know if there's any money behind it, but I certainly...
That would be nice.
I would certainly ask.
Okay.
Yes, definitely. The other thing is invited to participate with the Tour de Cure, American Diabetes Association, and I think I sent out an email to you about this, but basically they finally have the details, they have different kind of, again, it's a bicycle race route kind of thing and they're asking for help at their way stations, at the rest stops. So there is one that they've asked for a team of us to participate in or whatever, so I will send information out to you and anyone else that might be interested in participating and maybe we could put the actual race in our weekly report for any other bicyclists that might want to participate. And I think the other part that I have is from the MPO and that, we just had a meeting on Monday and obviously we recognized our former mayor, Steve Fabian there, he was recognized very nicely. Then we also talked about moving Burnt Store Road into the MPO's project priority list for FDOT. I think you've already heard about that. And it's been included, obviously, in a number of our transportation programs and keep pushing it up, but this is just one more thing that we might be able to do. It's particularly important because we're also looking at federal monies, although we know if we get federal funds, it delays projects, so just kind of keep pushing it in any way. There also is an update on the 2040 Long Range Transportation Cost Feasible Plan. Looking at the Long Range Transportation Plan for 2040. It's going to be on the website for the MPO. There is a public comment period until October 5th when the MPO meets next, so if anyone is interested, please take a look, go on. It deals with everything from congestion management at intersections to bike, pedestrian, multi-use trails, to transit, developer-funded roads, so everything related to the transportation.
Mayor, would you suggest that they possibly do a presentation here at council at some point in the future?
Well, you were there. It is a fairly detailed presentation, but it probably would be a good idea.
Maybe they can have an abbreviated version of it.
That would be if you're interested in hearing about what's happening with our roads and the transportation system, planning out 2040.
It would be good.
Maybe, yeah, after they have their comment period.
The final plan. Okay.
Right, I agree.
And Mr. Harrington is often here, but we'll convey that to him and that's all I have. Other comments?
None today.
Thank you.
I just wanted to remind everyone about the Tippecop fundraiser on Saturday and that's just, you know, it's come to dinner, bring your friends anytime between 4:30 and 9:00 and we'll be there waiting on you hand and foot and...
It's at Phil's 41.
It fills 41, so come out and have dinner. And I also wanted to thank David Drury and Howard and David Levin for all the work on Fisherman's Village. I think we came up with a good, I like the way it's going and thank you for all the work on the mining. I know that's a lot, a daunting task and you've made it very easy to understand.
Thanks.
That's it. Tom?
Sure. Tomorrow I will be at a meeting with the veterans on the wall and they will be having a discussion as to whether or not they prefer the names to be edged or engraved, so hopefully they will make a decision on that tomorrow and I will report back to you.
Thank you.
Also, Peace River Wildlife, Howard and I met on Friday afternoon with the chair and the vice chair for the Peace River Wildlife Center and they have concluded that they no longer want to negotiate with the owner and they have asked city to take over those negotiations and should council desire, I'd be happy to work with staff in continuing that.
I would think that an appointment's officially for Tom to continue working with the Peace.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
And I will try to finalize my investigation regarding the ownership, the surveys and stuff like that, but let's see if we can time it for a little bit after September 11th unless we get the extension.
We're hiring a surveyor.
Yeah, I understand, but even the surveyor would need to rely upon some legal opinions regarding some of the older things, so. But certainly this, I don't think the surveyor is going to be done before September 11th anyway, so that would be fine. That would work out fine.
David, do you think that you should do yours first, though? Because like you said, there's direction. If you find mistakes in the surveys and then we've paid him to do a survey and then you give him the information, then he's going to have to do the survey again.
No, no, I, he needs to do an independent survey. Things that I would be concerned about would be things such as like adverse possession or acquiescence and boundaries, something, things that are legal but not surveying necessarily.
So we need to have our own, and it may come out with the exact same thing, but we'll see.
Okay, Rachel?
I just sort of wanted to apologize to the Visual Arts Center because I felt like we didn't, we invited them here and we asked for that and then we were kind of curt and we didn't, I thought it was an awesome presentation, I mean, wow. Colonel, I think she was Air Force, was she? Yeah, she was a great find and great job and I don't think she was feeling so great, so I just want to tell her thank you and I was really impressed with everything that they do there. I think, you know, the things that she's instituted, she's going to take that to the next level and I didn't get a chance to tell her, but I will.
The building looks great. Nice and clean. Oh, absolutely.
I take it we will renew their lease.
I've already done that. We've already done that.
Can we just send her a quick letter and say, "We really sorry about the time."
Well...
Howard, did you give her 15 minutes? And it went to 25, at least.
We give people...
She was enthusiastic.
So, I mean, it was...
Yes.
Lots going on over there, you know? My grandson took art camp this summer for a week. I mean, they got a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, they do and I don't want it to be, felt like we glossed over it, you know what I mean?
I, we will do that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Anything else? Before we adjourn, I need to take notice that the city council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida will conduct a meeting pursuant to Section 447.605 Florida statutes to discuss collective bargaining in the matter of the International Association of Firefighters. Negotiations on August 26th, which is today, immediately following the regular city council meeting. This meeting will take place in the third floor conference room, City Hall Annex, here at this address. Persons in attendance will include the city council, city manager, human resources manager, finance director, fire chief and fire operations chief. Need to just to give notice of that. Now, if there's any comments? Citizens' comments? Nothing?
We wouldn't. Wait before he changes his mind.
Okay. We are, we are going to skip a meeting now.